Hello Chat. The rainstorm's end. It's quiet. But there's supposed to be a meeting tonight, so we'll go to the meeting. See what occurs. I think we're gonna discuss what's happening after the storm, after the server reset. For those that don't know, the server's shutting down on Wednesday night tomorrow. And it's gonna reopen Friday night after a complete wipe. So we're starting again, rebuilding the city again. Evening.
Hey guy.
How you doing?
You know, I think I had a dream one time that I met you. Mirth, wasn't it?
Yeah, it's been about 3 days now.
Oh, I see. Wow, yeah, I've been... Been sleeping, been out and about, really haven't had... Cheer time.
I've been here, but it's been pretty quiet actually in the city.
Yeah. It's known to get that way as close to the storms, I've come to notice in my time here in Westeros. Slash? Rin? There's Slash, Sir Rin?
Hey, how's it going?
I'm not Sir Rin.
Huzzah! Huzzah!
Sir?
I'm just...
Sir Knight?
Nope, you don't know who I am.
Something like that. Never turned off the lights, is that good?
Armored man with a beautiful shield?
Nope, that's not me. Okay, fine. Hello, Harlan. Huzzah!
Could I ask a question about the storm?
Yeah, definitely.
When we return, do we have to rebuild the entire city?
Uh, only the walls, the outer walls stay up. Everything else is, gets, goes with.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and the keep. And, and this keep right here too, but I don't think this one in particular is gonna stay here because this is a... Renovated version, you might see the old version of the keep.
Okay.
It's just the storm, it wipes everything away, you know?
Yeah, I was, I was actually-
We'll renovate it.
I was actually looking at the geography of the land.
Yeah.
Although it would be a lot, a lot of work-
What about it?
Um, if the outer walls were more forward, we'd have a lot more flatland towards the dock. But if they, if they stay up, then it's irrelevant.
Hmm, God's determined that.
Thank you.
Has anyone seen Lady Topaz or anyone?
No, the only other person-
I just woke up not too long ago.
The only other person I saw was Keegan.
Keegan? What's he doing?
He was jumping off the walls. Oh, but there was a visitor from the Night's Watch.
What about the Night's Watch?
There was a visitor from the Night's Watch banging on the gate, so I spoke to them. He said there's 8 wildlings south of the wall.
Oh shit, um... Okay, that's, that's actually quite a lot, guys. Uh, has anyone taken a look around and make sure everything's on the stant in which they need to be? Excellent, yeah, we should be on high alert.
It was just me protecting the city at the time, I've not seen anyone.
When was this? How long ago?
About, about 20 minutes, I'd say.
Okay.
Just, just before you arrived, Slash.
So I mean, there's not much to do, it seems like. Uh, I hear there's some weddings today. Uh, Lady Cass is getting married and some others. Uh, uh, on my mailbox right here about, uh... Who the hell's this about? I think maybe I'll go and drop on by and just, just, just to see what's going on. Ron and Genevieve, isn't that Winterfell folk?
We are gonna have a meeting here very shortly.
Is the wedding at the Vale?
Uh, I think Cass's wedding's at the Vale, yeah, Cass, Cass and... Her knight guy. I'm short on his name.
I've never met him, I don't know.
Oh, the Vale's a nice place. Cass is a nice woman.
I think the Vale is a very tall place. Feel sorry for the bugger who takes one dead.
It must be hard for them to gather resources.
Steps off the edge.
The air is quite different there, that's for sure. Uh, you know, they don't seem to do too bad on resources, to be honest. I mean, sure, you gotta... Walking up and down to do, but it's not bad. And I think do a lot of their work at the blood gates. And then they take it up there in bulk, you know, during... The main productive times. They got their ways. How did, uh, the things with the Iron Islands, uh, pan out? Last I heard, uh, only the temporary man was sitting on the throne. Have, have they figured out who's gonna be the, uh, the, the, the permanent... Uh, lord over there?
I have no clue.
Um, last I heard, the talk was-
I wonder if he's bending the knee?
I heard it might be something to do with Driftmark?
Oh.
But discussions were still going on.
Something to do with Driftmark. So, does that mean... What's his name? Valeris, Valerion, or whatever his name is? Maybe he got... I'll have to ask Lady Rarity, I have been away for quite a while. Where did Kurt run off to? When's this meeting, Kurt?
All, all I know-
Whenever Lady Rarity is done with the things in her head, she plans on getting it started, but, uh, she has stuff going on in her head right now.
Yeah, all I know, when I, when I joined the city here, um, I met, um... I forget his first name, Valerian. And he offered me a place, uh, he said I might wanna go to Driftmark. Or, he said now the war was over, I also might wish to settle in the Iron Isles. But, uh, Lady Rarity's offer seemed much fairer, so I came here and chose to live here.
Oh yeah, you know, you stick around till after the storm, you'll definitely see some things. Especially, you know, I'm not, I've, I've been, uh, been away for a little bit, but...
I did a, got permanent trip.
Farmers are always nice. Farmers are always good to have right after storms, that's great, Slash. Yeah, it seems, uh, Kurt came and told me that we're having a meeting, I don't know if you were here for that, were you?
Uh, yeah, I was, I was trying to wait for everybody to wake up.
Okay. I was wondering why everyone was kinda droning over here.
Yeah, I think we're waiting for, uh, Lady Topaz to wake up.
I'm just gonna sit inside.
I like that shield, man, it's nice.
So, Chat, here we are, in the nice keep, posh, but we're waiting for the meeting to start, and we can't start the meeting until Lady Rarity turns up.
The artwork here is so nice, look at that. That's a wonderful piece, it's beautiful.
Yeah, I've been going around seeing a lot of nice paintings.
Does anyone want this vulture?
No, he'll probably get lost in the storm anyway, so there's not a lot of point.
Alright, that, that's for... Hey Kurt, how have you been?
I've been good, how about you, Harlan?
I'm doing well. Uh, anything news happening? I've been away for a little bit, man. I hope everything's been, you know, calm, peaceful?
Yeah, everything's peaceful.
The, the last bit of news that I had heard was Serenity had gone to Winterfell.
Yes, and, uh, she tried to say goodbye to you. But you would, you refused to get out of your head, so we ended up punching you and threatening to sacrifice you to the Red Stag.
Oh, okay, how did that work out?
Well, you weren't sacrificed, obviously.
Oh, I see, I see, I see.
If you're trying to hit me, you're doing a horrible job.
Nah, I don't wanna hit you. You got a nice vulture on board. I wouldn't wanna punch your vulture.
Yeah, don't hurt Scar, she's a good girl. Which, by the way, could I talk to you in private quickly, Harlan?
Oh yeah.
I think these two guys should spoon.
Why did you just meet him?
Welcome back!
I'm awake.
Hello?
Oh!
Anyone out there?
Hello! Hello? Yep, I'm out here.
Hi, um... Um, embarrassing question, but my clothes have seemed to have gone missing from my wardrobe. Um, would you be able to get me some clothes, please?
Aye, sure, let me check my horse.
Thank you.
I gotta go into my head, so I'll be sitting here waiting for the meeting.
Very well. So, I'll sit at the back, because, uh, no one knows we get chat, so... We'll sit here and be quiet.
Alright, I am back, um...
Ah, crap.
Everyone? I ask everyone, please, uh... Stay inside, um... Rarity, are you there?
Uh-huh, aye, I'll give you a moment.
Aye, I'm going to, uh, close my eyes and hand you, uh, stuff.
This is a lovely room, isn't it?
Close your eyes and I'll kiss you.
I'll make sure you're turning around, otherwise you'll see me.
Remember, I'll always be true.
What a difference it makes to basic arc. There's so many more building possibilities. Oh, excuse me, chat, I'm running. So many more moving possibilities in this game with the SKR, SKR P mods.
Okay, you can pick the rest of the stuff up, thank you.
Ah, no problem.
Um, I don't know where they disappeared to, to be honest. Thank you so much, Seren.
You don't have spare clothes in your room? Ah, you're welcome.
I did, but everything's gone missing.
What I think?
Game up? Where is everyone?
I must say, the, the, the casual attire very much so suits you, it looks nice.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna lie, he's telling the truth.
Um, right, okay, um, 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 um. Where is everyone?
Hmm, I don't know exactly.
We got Keegan.
Hello?
Keegan, do, do you know where everyone is?
Um, I do know Roderick was off to the bank earlier, I don't know if he's returned yet.
I know, I know the bank's closed.
We can't start this meeting without them.
Give him a few minutes, eh?
I could go look for them.
Hmm, I don't think that's the best idea. They know this meeting's happening, they should be here soon enough. Unless more pressing matters, you know? Tie them somewhere else.
Uh, Lady Rarity, before the meeting starts, I do have, uh, one announcement I need, do need to make.
What's that, Keegan?
Uh, not too long ago, a member of the Night's Watch, uh, came by to, uh, warn the kingdoms that there are 8 known wildlings currently south of the wall at this time.
Oh my. That's not good.
And, uh, also, another matter has happened before the, uh, sleep as well.
And that will be?
It was accused wildlings, uh, within the city walls, uh, no one was injured, and... The Night's Watch did show up all... I was, uh, talking with 3 members, uh, they were looking to, uh, for help getting a bear.
So, there was wildlings within side our walls?
Uh, yes, the Knights, Lord, Commander Daniel and, uh, Reyes accused them of being wildlings. So we then asked them to please be escorted into the jail for further questioning, one ran off, another one willingly came into the jail to be questioned.
That's weird, one ran off and the other one was like, "Alright, take me, I don't know this guy."
Well, during the ensuing chaos... Apparently, uh, there were some other wildlings outside the gate according to, uh, Daniel. As I had to save Reyes from being, uh, harmed by, uh, Dimorphonons that were trying to attack him.
Damn.
Did he run off outside the city, or could he still be within the walls?
He ran outside the city, uh, went to block his entrance at, his exit at the door, but he jumped over the embattlements.
Um, Keegan has reported this to me, uh, of the 8... Of the 8 wildlings, sorry about that. And, uh, we've taken our precautions and we've already done, uh... Patrols and scouted inside and, uh, shortly outside of Storm's End.
Alright, okay.
So as of right now, I think things do seem a bit, uh, under control and safe.
It's a bit strange really, because wildlings attacking, it's all good roll.
Alright, good, as long as the people are safe.
Everything's gonna get wiped out tomorrow anyway, so...
But, hey, Keegan, you're gonna have to tell me more about this, uh... The matters that you spoke about earlier before the storm, I wasn't aware of this at all.
Uh, yes, well, uh, the Night's Watch are attempting to take authority here in the Storm's Land... Storm's End again, but I wasn't going to allow it to happen a second time.
Oh yeah, you're a ranger, no one else is here.
Uh, Sir Ren and Sir Slash were with me outside during that time, and I asked for them to escort them into the jail as well.
Right, okay. So you're telling me that the Night's Watch, as well as the wildlings, were all here at the same time? Did you guys send a runner to get the Night's Watch?
Uh, no, uh, 3 individuals came in and started talking to me about, uh, trying to get a bear, and then, uh, that's when, uh, Daniel and Reyes, uh, appeared. We sent no runner, they just showed up.
Okay, that's a bit strange.
Why did they show up, the Night's Watch?
That is a good question.
Or did they come with a different message?
I could not tell you that, uh, after the, uh, sleep, a runner from the Night's Watch did come with the message about the 8 wildlings.
Excuse me, I really need to get a drink.
Alright, so, while we're here... Not too sure what's been going on, but I think this meeting's more or less about... Who's coming back after the storm, I would imagine. Let's, let's go ahead and get a show of hands of everyone who's here currently. Alright, Keegan.
I'm kind of surprised that... Majority of everyone aren't here. Especially where this is the last meeting before the big storm. Where winter is here. So... How is everyone today? Like, is there any more gossip than everything else and all that?
Good, thanks.
Everything's good with me. Not so well for me.
Seren, how are you feeling?
I feel pain.
Illness is taking hold of you?
I... Just trying to stain, stain. Crazy.
How much longer do you think you have left, Seren?
What's gonna happen? Are you gonna start like, like vomiting blood? I mean, like, is this gonna be like very bad or what?
Don't know what will happen.
Don't know what's gonna happen.
Coming.
You'd mean he's not coming back after the storm if he's planning to die, no?
I'm, I'm wondering, should we, should we burn your body afterwards, or, or what?
Might be the wisest idea. Just in case, something does happen.
Very well, Sir Rand. I'm sure we'll be able to make an arrangement. Until then, I hope you try to remain strong.
And don't worry, I'll, I'll take care of your stuff.
It's heartbreaking to see my dearest friend. Fault says illness.
He was jumping around outside, that's how. He's no place. He should be on the toilet, is he off the deft door?
Your voice seems to be breaking up a bit, Sir Rand.
I just wait.
Is he gonna drop down dead in the meeting? That's what we wanna know.
A lot going in my mind.
I could say that. He doesn't want to experience his role play really, so.
There's a lot of things. I'm just trying to I just put it in past. Hello? I hope to go. Rest in peace.
Andy, Andy, hear me?
Yes, sir.
Sir Rand.
A lot of wrong.
Hello, is anyone inside? Sir, could you get the door? Thank you. Sorry. Well, Sir Rand, I hope you'll be able to live through the winter.
Yeah, stay strong, buddy.
You didn't make a Yes.
Try to stay as long alive as I can. There's this, there's this rare plant that grows. We'll have to get some and, uh, we can dry it out and smoke it and it'll make you feel better. I'll, I'll look for it. Alright, that might be good. It's one word I only wish to say. Even my love, that word anymore. Excuse me. Didn't you what you're doing? Where's he going? For medicine. Oh, he's getting medicine.
Sir Roderick, Barty, welcome back. You're rather late.
No, no, no.
Lady Rarity, Duke Jock has been arrested for high treason. He's been taken to King Zonding.
Good, well done. You assisted with the arrest?
Aye, along with Winterfell, the Aran Islands, Harrenhal.
I'm glad. Done well.
A little better.
Yes, Sir Rand.
What paper did I have saved?
I'll be fine.
Is he gonna drop down dead in the meeting? Just for effect, that'd be good.
Deal with this meeting since-
Is everyone that's away, as far as we know?
As far as we know, yes, ma'am.
Very well, um, Sir Roderick, do you know where my clothes have disappeared to?
I do not. Would you like me to check?
That was strange. I will do the meeting first and then we can go on a hunt for my clothing. I have to kind of ask assistance from Stenham's on clothing.
Alright, that's kind of interesting.
Not in that way. Right. As we all know, winter is here. So, I just want to know who will be returning after the winter storms. If you rise, then I can count you. Kurt, you're not returning? Kurt?
Be in his head.
After a minute, Kurt's been very quiet, so he must be in his head. Why is he wearing cloth anyway?
What about my cloth?
You're on my seat. Oh, whoa. He is here.
Wait, Kurt, do you know why you're standing?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
Stand up, stand up.
Why, I don't know what's happening, I'm sorry.
Will you be returning after the winter storms?
Yes.
Good. Okay, you're on my seat. Right, we all know how difficult it is after a storm. Especially with the rebuilding of our city. So, the first thing that we do for the next two to three days after coming back is gathering, the joyful gathering. Andy, you won't be taking part in any of the gathering as your main job will be trying to get the animals to provide us. Especially, the first thing that you'll be getting will be an anky, a deward, stag, and a beaver. You know how it works.
I understand.
Good. I'm just trying to think, to be able to make the construction a bit faster. We'll split ourselves up into two parties, so if we can get roughly around about two of each animal, then there'll be a constant supply of resources coming in. I do know that, uh, mainly the dawds are really hard to find, especially with everyone trying to find them at the same time. If you hope some other stable hands will, uh, join us to be able to assist you. And also, after the storm, in this construction, I won't be doing all the building. First, I'm hoping that some of you will be able to place the parts of which are made to basically making your own homes. I'm hoping to basically lay down some foundations and you can design your home however you want. How does that sound to you?
Aye. As long as, there's not five hundred houses that are purple.
Really? I did not paint that purple. I'm just making this a fact right now. I was not the one to paint it purple.
But you didn't argue against it? Yep.
Do you wanna argue with a pregnant woman?
Uh, nope, nope, that's all you, you have all with that one.
Good point, good point.
May I ask a question, please?
Of course.
Um, if I trained for weight, uh, lifting stone and things while we're gathering resources, would I have an opportunity later on to study recipe books again?
Yes. After the storm, the gods have only made it that you'll be able to use a mind wipe once. So you've got to be very careful on how you use it.
Thank you. Once we're built, I should only need to use it the once.
But are we gonna remain the same age until the storm?
I assume so.
That's wonderful. Oh, that's awesome. Can't believe I'll be missing out on that.
Also- around-
Don't worry, I'll, I'll, I'll visit your grave every Sunday. Every Sunday. Uh,
Wait, what?
Two kinds, or slash?
Do you know this, Sir Rand? After the storm, you will have a gravestone. We will rebuild it for you.
And I know exactly where we should put it.
Just make sure, Roderick, it's not in the swamp. I know you like the dump wildling bodies in there.
About overruled me.
She's tight on her feed.
Rand's lookout would be in ideal place.
What a wonderful.
Okay, then. Keegan, you are our own blacksmith. And it's the information of the mind wipes. How do you plan to go about it?
Well, seeing as metal is quite heavy, I'm gonna have to split between, uh, carry weight and the, uh, crafting ability, but there will be more into crafting than carrying.
Well, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
I can design your blacksmith to the point that you can bring animals into it so you can unload straight from the animals without carrying it all. How does that sound?
That would be wonderful and much appreciated.
Or, or, or have a storage building attached to the, uh, the blacksmith and have the, the, the big doors like that too. That's how we had it before somewhere else.
Yes, each, uh, is a different way of designing it. We'll see what we can, uh, come up with. Also, when building the walls in the summer, I'll be placing the seams and I'll hope that some of you will be able to place the walls which will give me time to place more ceilings on the middle wall, because I do plan to have two extra walls. We'll have the courtyard walls, a middle walls, and then we'll have the god-made walls as the outside. Does that sound to you all?
Yeah, I've some experience laboring on a building site. I've done that sort of thing before.
The first week is just nothing but, it, it's work, but it's definitely worth it.
Yes, this is a lot of work. The point in that is going to be very stressful, so we're all gonna have to work together. First few days, normally everyone sleeps in the keep. Bear in mind, the keep does not look like this after the storm. So we've got the animals sorted after the storm, we've got the building sorted after the storm, the blacksmith after the storm's, um, uh, not smurf, murf.
Yes, milady.
You are going to be a farmer, correct, still after the storm?
Yes, I take it you want carrots quite early and things like that.
The lady speaks.
Uh, yes, yes, that's true, milady, so.
Good. Her main focus after the storm will be working well with Rena, that's if she does return, if you hope so. And I'll be making kibble for the stable hands as well as trying to grow carrots as fast as possible.
Yes, I understand, so we can get some good horses bred.
Indeed, and also add some food. We do need some food better than cooked meat. I'm sure that will come in good time. Apart from that,
I, I don't think it's just the carrots that we, we worry about. I mean, you gotta get all the vegetables, to be honest. Uh, the one that makes the Dimorphodon kibble is also pretty important, so we can hurry up and start, uh, kibble taming the stags as well.
Yes, all I need is a few glass panels and, uh, we'll get vegetables up and running.
Well, until we can manage to, uh, get the resources to build a greenhouse and have to be out in the open, or at least on some foundations to place the greenhouse over the top of them.
Okay.
Greenhouse pieces do cost a lot. Crystal, cementing paste, and metal ingots.
Apologize.
Perfectly fine, Barty. Alright, has anyone got any questions or suggestions for after the storm?
Have fun. I just have one question.
Uh huh.
I lied, huzzah.
Huzzah, Sir Rand.
Huzzah.
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 Well then, the next topic will be standing if you want a meeting straight after the storm in regards of blueprints, or do you want to take the time? to think about during the storm period of the first lot of blueprints? It's completely up to you. We can discuss now, in the storm, or after.
Did you, wait, is, uh, blueprints? You said blueprints?
Uh huh.
Yeah, uh, so in my observation, I've come to see that the green blueprints really do sell, no matter what you buy. Um, I think anything we get green would be smart, you know, green sword, green crossbow, green. You know, just get it, get it quick and get it out there. Hope you get one.
Maybe my lady.
Yeah, I would. Wouldn't get the green crossbow, yeah.
I mean. I guess you're right, yeah.
Green swords maybe.
Green club?
Maybe we can talk to those friends of ours in Harrenhal, in the Vale, the Iron Islands, such other places. Soon we get back to decide upon who's getting what.
Just get what sells.
I did notice there was a. If I can say, I did notice there was a lack of boot boots this season, uh, this summer.
Someone had blue fur, as far as I know, blue pelted fur.
Yeah, that was the only boot boot I've seen this entire.
There were purple, then there were purple kaiten ones as well. It's just no one really buys them since they're the most useless piece of armor.
I don't know what you're talking about. The boots are always the first thing to go if you're fighting on top of a mountain, like, say, like, you know, you're in your wolf.
If you're fighting animal, but if you're fighting people.
Still important. Really, just anything that'll sell. Just get something, get it out there and let's sell it. Hope we get a good one.
I need to go in my head for a little bit. Carry on discussing them. Just get tonight's everything out.
Pretty good, huh?
I have a headache after the horse kicked me, but I'm alright.
Got a horse kicking you?
Yeah. I tried to.
Well, you should have had faster reflexes.
Instead of grappling juke jack, fucking grappled core off the top of his horse.
What?
Oh, I don't think Seren would like to hear that one.
I would have laughed to see him.
Can I, can I discuss the wildling thing earlier?
Go for it.
Well, we had her in custody and it was, it was like a hundred percent confirmed, you know, wildling, so there's no stewards awake at that point, so. You know, and the next time in that situation, like, what do we do? Do we have permission to, to execute her, or, I mean, I was, I was gonna hold her for the sixty minutes to, um, you know, see if anybody woke up in the meantime, but just curious for next time.
Well, as you're a knight, the responsibility would fall upon whoever is next in command, which would have been you, assuming you're the only knight available.
It was me and my.
Yeah, as a knight, you have the right to carry out the law.
It was, it was Ren. Well, I, I was leaving on Ren since he was the, you know, the spinner longer than I is.
As we currently stand here in Storm's End and our back dealings with the Night's Watch this summer, we believe that we're taking upon our own responsibility to deal with wildlings. And it does mean putting sword to their flesh. Whether that changes in the next summer, well, that's up for discussion, but right now, as it stands, that's where we stand, so I shall it fall to you, you had every right to put sword against flesh.
Okay, alright, I understand.
You know, honestly, yesterday when that wildling appeared, I didn't even think about capture, just more interested in killing them. Bother dealing with the capturing them.
Well, if you can gather information from them, it's beneficial. Usually they don't open their mouths. But I do not care for taking a wildling up to the Night's Watch for how they've treated us. And that's why we deal with it now, eh?
Oh, don't worry. The Night's Watch, uh, again, attempted to assert authority here in Storm's End, but it wouldn't allow it this time.
You're above them in this kingdom. You can kick them out as you so.
My man, Keegan. Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, they, they, they did kinda, they did back down after, after, uh, after Keegan mentioned that. Remember, you know, remember Danus to do whatever we wanted to do, so.
Yeah, the Night's Watch are a bumbling bunch of buffoons this sea- summer anyway.
Hopefully they get a, wait a minute. It's a beer cup, my foot.
I thought you were spitting blood in that cup or something, I don't know.
I was wondering what was up with that, too.
Hmm, oh yeah, I remember I passed out last night.
Oh, that's right, we all got beers last night.
Wait, you got beer? Alright, from the tournament.
Oh, yeah, yeah, tournament.
Who had a tournament?
I'll be back.
There was a tournament in Driftmark. Grand tournament. Storm's End absolutely cleaned the floor.
Yeah.
Oh, that's good. Good job, guys. N- nice job, Bartholomew. I had no idea.
Took out the rangen.
Sooner.
Slash took the winter crown. And I took the joustin melee.
What crown did you get, Slash?
What was it called? The, uh, the winter crown?
The rose winter crown.
Winter crown. Who, who, uh, who was the contestant?
He was the most beautiful female in Westroth.
Oh dang, nice.
I'd beat the, I'd beat the duke and then I'd beat, uh, uh, Rodrick.
What did you have to do? What is that, like fisticuffs? What's that? Winter crown?
I don't know. It was full, full night, yeah, full night gear.
Full night gear in the fight? With swords and stuff? Damn.
Yeah, swords and shields.
The amount of fucking people I had to face in that melee after the joustin was ridiculous. Everyone kept challenging me.
We'd rarely even compete in it.
That's because you're good.
Oh, yeah.
I've never even held a lance before.
Thank you, my lady.
I, I, I missed out. Good job, guys. Great job. What did you shoot with, Bartholomew? Was it just a normal, uh, bow?
Yeah, the normal bow. I thought it was a crossbow, but it didn't bear.
Yeah. To get this to the next knight, my arm.
And I'll give it back to you, Ren, just as I did every man. The tournament.
No, no.
This is yours.
No, 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 it is yours.
That's a wedding gift, eh?
I want you to keep it, Ren.
Sir Rodrick, can I make a suggestion? Place it at the grape side.
Ah, there you go.
Ah!
I don't like to speak about his grave when he's here. Guys, he's here, he's alive, enjoy life, enjoy, it's beautiful. Breathe it in.
Yeah, it's what she, I mean, uh, he said.
Just remember, he may be sick, but he could still whip your ass, Barty.
Whoop yo ass.
I'm sure I could have.
Eh. Depends if he can hit me with an arrow or not. Think I got quite knocked out a few times.
Put an arrow in your ass when you were spying on Sir Rodrick?
I wasn't. I was just trying to wave at him.
Yeah, I checked the windows there. He couldn't see shit.
He was trying.
Hmm. Well.
Hey Kurt.
If you say so, Sir Rodrick.
Seren a peeping tom?
You get any songs for us to sing?
So we are learning.
Uh, no. Never gonna wash off my.
Why don't you sing one anyway, Kurt?
Here, Kurt, have a beer while you're singing it.
I'll, I'll, I'll sing.
Oh, nope. You have to sing. You want the beer.
You're a cruel man, Seren.
Kurt.
What?
Are you sure you don't have any songs? Maybe one about butter or something?
Fuck sick.
Nah, I don't got any songs about butter.
Right, here we go. I gave this to Barty. I'm going to give it to everyone.
Don't worry, there are still loopholes.
Alright, hang on. I'll be right.
What's happening?
Yeah, but at least you can't say that word. Fucking door.
You want to drill it out in the keep.
I'm quite entertained with all this. Would like to say, I'm hoping that there will be a wedding today. As long as that we can find a maester.
Talking of weddings, uh, when I was at the Iron Bank, I bumped into, uh, now Cassandra, since she has stepped down as lady and Sir Jason, and they have invited all of Storm's End to their wedding.
When would this be?
Uh, I believe in, it's either one hour thirty minutes from now or two hours thirty minutes from now. Uh, I'm gonna, after we're finished in.
Two hours and thirty minutes from now.
And then I believe, uh, Emron's getting married also to Geneviun tonight.
Mm-hmm. I got a letter on that one right here. What's that at?
I thought you said fi- five hours after the, after I'm asleep.
Oh, that's the same time. That they're both getting married at eight o'clock. Uh, Westroth time, it sounds like.
Yeah, eight PM Westroth time.
Why would they do that? I mean, why don't they all just get married together at the same place?
It is, it's a double wedding. It is a double wedding.
Oh, okay.
Hmm.
Wow, Rodrick, you should try to just get all married. It's a triple wedding.
Make it triple. Maybe I should find something to wear.
And any beer we've got would have to be drunk before the storm anyway.
Everybody grab one of these.
It's a trick.
Um, what's this?
It's a trick.
All lies. All lies.
As if that would stop anyone in this room.
Yeah.
Hey, I've held up my word. I haven't said anybody that, I haven't mentioned that word.
You guys might want the truth. I don't even know the joke about this. I understand it's some word with butter and you guys, but I have no idea what's going on.
Yeah, I'll make it.
The word butter will no longer be said.
Don't say the B word.
That's fine with me. I don't need them to start.
Just use the word lubricant.
I've found a loophole already.
Told you there was loopholes.
There's always a loophole at something.
Is this more stuff about the dirt being?
Maester Saez, or however you say her name, be available for such a service.
Um, what are you talking about? Sorry, I was kind of in my head, kind of listening, like.
The maester of the Vale. Would she be available for such a service?
I do hope so. Probably gonna have to send a runner over there to see if she is available. In the meantime. Yep, no, I've got nerves and like, like, um. Um, please excuse me.
Sir Rodrick, if you need a runner, if you can supply me with a note to give the maester, I can head in up there and ask when I head to confirm the time of the weddings.
Alright, I'd appreciate that, Barty.
Well, yeah, well, even if that guy was five hours, five hours after the sleep.
Well, uh, before everyone, uh.
Depends.
Now, go ahead, Barty.
I was just gonna say, I think that's correct. I'm just not sure about with my head time and all that, kind of. I do know that myself and Library are in the same head time, but I'm not sure about everyone.
I know I won't be able to make.
There is always a possibility we can do something a bit more grand when the storm comes about, you know?
I won't be after team. I need to sleep very soon.
Uh, right, well, before.
Is there anything that anyone else here wants to bring up?
Yes.
Yes, I have one thing I want to bring out, but on one condition.
Let's see what you got, Seren.
Owen, you might wanna stay outside.
Oh no.
Owen's almost a grown ass man. He's fine.
Alright, so I suggest that Sir Rodrick be wearing this from now on every time we have a meeting.
Oh no.
No.
Okay.
Uh, Sir Rodrick, can you come outside? Sir Rodrick, the maester from the Vale's outside.
We were literally just about to send a runner to come and get you, um.
Before everyone gathers, I'd like to have everyone gather outside in front of the keep, uh, I got something, uh, to celebrate such a joyous summer here in Storm's End. And hopefully we can continue the joyousness, uh, next summer.
Keegan.
Um, I don't know. Are you, uh, busy?
Keegan. Hey, whoa!
Yes.
Seren, there's no need for that, for God's sake. Oh, if you're gonna do that, I ain't even gonna wait here. If I'm gonna be attacked for no reason, I'm just gonna just go back to my bed, thank you.
Kurt.
Not necessary. It is not urgent for you to be to complaining right now.
Well. Sir Rodrick, would she be able to, uh, say, I, I've got butterflies, my stomach is coming like this.
Alright. Lady Rarity and I would like to officially get married. And we need to make a start to perform this service.
I see. Um, well, I do have some time. To spare, so I'll.
I'm approaching. The winter has approached very quickly. And it will only be a small service of our closest friends here in Storm's End and anyone else who's available to attend at such short notice. But if you do have the time, be much appreciated.
No, it is more than fine. I will be happy to help you.
They're getting married. They're getting married.
Appreciate that, maester. I will
It is no problem.
Try to talk to her upon it. Try to talk to her upon an appropriate time, then.
Uh, right, is everyone outside?
Oh my god.
Yep.
Uh huh.
Alright, let's, let's, uh, Keegan has something to say first.
Alright, since this is such a joyous, uh, summer here in Storm's End with everyone, and also to celebrate Sir Roderick and Lady Rarity.
Nice.
Nice touch, Keegan. Did I just see a fucking arrow?
I saw an arrow. I'm sure that was Barth.
Was that Cupid?
Barth's not even here. Yeah.
My blue eye though. When would you like to do this?
Hey Ren, I'll be back, I'll be back in a little bit.
Well, I need to go to sleep, so.
Yeah, I'm a little nervous and, uh, I.
I heard that.
Come, this way.
Harlan? Keep trying. You're very mad at this.
I had the whole, you jumped over, you jumped over.
Seems like I have to train our rangers in shooting, it seems like.
Hey.
Oh, I'm fine, apparently just our, uh, first ranger needs trained. Which is kinda sad. Oh, there you go. Oh, no, that's alright. Uh.
What the hell?
Owen.
Whoa. Where did we go? Oh, there it is.
Knocked mine again. What?
That was way, you missed by a mile, oh. That was horrible.
Hey, can you stop for a second, Kurt? Can you, can you wait for a second? I can't, I can't see from here, can you like?
You are Kai Maester.
Would you like me to fix it for you, buddy?
No, I gotta go to bed anyways.
Okay.
I, I do apologize for that, um.
It's quite alright.
In one hour's time. I know there's many weddings going on.
I, would you say?
Very nice, Owen, that's, that's so cool, I mean, that's gotta be like the coolest thing I've ever seen. What is this magic, this light coming out of your wrist?
I'm confused, did he need me for something or didn't he? Hey, don't head inside.
I'm stuck.
And I were trapped. Goodnight, have fun.
Goodnight, everyone, goodnight, everyone.